Here we go.
That's right.
We'd like to call the commission back into order, please, if you can quite bring it down a little bit. Thank you. Next order of business is gonna be old, is gonna be old business and Carrie, do you have any updates on the PZ application two thousand fourteen fifteen dash six?
Yes, so regarding forty zero road, I spoke with Brendan Shane, who is the off, the hearing officer in the office of adjudications with DEEP. So February first, I believe, was the last day to file exceptions. I spoke with Brendan Shane today at three fifteen and he said, as of three fifteen today, no exceptions have been filed. So he walked me through kind of the next steps. He said that either he or the commissioner would issue a final decision if there are no exceptions, which then after that, there may be some time between realizing that there are no exceptions and issuing a final decision. And then after the final decision is issued, then staff at DEEP would be directed to issue a wetlands permit. My question for him, and he said to talk with the town attorney, which I've sent an email to as well, was what deter, what starts our thirty-five day clock where the application would come back to planning and zoning? Is it the final decision being issued or is it the permit being issued? He thought it was the permit, but he wasn't, wasn't sure and wanted to just have me double check with the town attorney. The other question that the commission asked at the last meeting was, there's the adjudicatory hearing issue and component that's going on, which is what I was just talking about, but then there's also the declaratory ruling, which is, that was covered in the newspaper recently and it was stated that DEEP would not have a decision until May. And so he also recommended that I talk with the town attorney about the question of, do these two things interact? Or, you know, are they dependent upon one another? He, he said that they are two separate legal proceedings. So there are some situations where the adjudicatory hearing and the adjudicatory office could issue a determination about one thing and then maybe years or months later, there could be a declaratory ruling about the same item and then it could require modifications in a permit that was issued under the adjudicatory hearing. So in summary, I've sent an email to Pat Young to find out, but it may be soon that we will get notification that a final decision has been issued and that a wetlands permit will be coming soon after, which would start the clock for the thirty-five days. And I just, I'm going to stay on top of this because once that clock starts, we have to act one way or another. If we don't act within those thirty-five days, it will automatically be approved.
Did he give you any timeframe for, like, you know, the steps, if, so he makes, they make the ruling right, correct? The first, you know, and then they, then they send the permit, the final decision and the permit. How close are they together or how long from?
So, well, he assured me that he would not be issuing the final decision tomorrow.
Okay, alright.
So we have tomorrow. It sounds like I wouldn't be surprised if he issues a final decision sometime next week and then maybe they would issue the permit at the end of the week, the week after.
So it's possible that-
I think it's this month that, but, that we need to get going. I need to confirm with Pat about when that clock starts.
But if, if the clock starts ticking next week, let's say, then this would be on the agenda for our next meeting.
I, I think we would have to have special meetings.
Well, I mean, at least, at least the first meeting would have to be here and then maybe one after that. We have thirty-five days. We would have to consider the next regular meeting-
Yes.
And then have a special one-
Yes.
Or two, depending on where it falls on the calendar.
Correct.
Well, it wouldn't be two, 'cause then there would be a regular meeting after that one, I believe.
Right.
I'd have to check the calendar for-
And the commission had, had voted to have a public hearing.
Right.
So there has to be notice in the newspaper that has to meet certain deadlines, so a certain number of days, you know, before the meeting, but not too close to the meeting. So I have to look at all of that. And typically, we have advertisements in the sound, which is, only comes out once a week. It's a lot of moving parts.
But if, if you stayed in touch with them and they knew when they're issuing the final decision and gave you some guidance on when, I think the permit would be, you could at least start planning, right?
Yes.
Things in place.
Yes.
That's probably the best you can do.
I mean, you, I mean, if, if it's about notifying, notifying the public or doing the, uh-
Legal.
The legal end, I'm just gonna suggest it'd be better to put it in-
Uh huh, right.
Even if we don't know, because if we don't do that and we can't have a public hearing the next meeting, that's gonna limit us to maybe just one made, or, well, it will limit us to-
Well, we can't have the public hearing at the next meeting because we, the deadlines for the newspaper don't work.
Alright.
The, the soonest that we can have a public hearing would be the twenty-third.
Okay, so that, okay.
Check to see how, how quick they can do a permit. It might not be as-
Right.
Well, that's, yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm just trying to figure worst case. I mean, I'd like to have three, I'd like to have three meetings available, but if we can only have two, then the two it'll be, so.
Right.
Alright. Alright. Anything else on that one?
No.
Alright. Town planners' report. Do we have to, do you wanna do-
So I don't have any new applications. And I think if you wanna go right into the discussion regarding allowing wine use?
Yep. Bob and Al?
Good evening. We appreciate your time and I have to go over a presentation just to get you orientated. And Al is here, Al Rose, and this is Al's farm and his wife, Ruth. Wife, Lot? Do you wanna do that? Sorry. Anyway.
Just keep your name and-
Further, I'm Bob Criscolo, licensed construction and land surveyor for Rose Orchards. And I've put it on the map here, a survey that I had done for the farm probably about four or five years ago. It's a forty-eight and a half acre parcel plan. And to orientate you, this is Bramford Road, this is Valley Road, and this is the Bramford River. And the main part of the farm, if you've been there, is right up in the center if you were there to purchase a pumpkin or a tree or anything like that. Its zone is I two. And there are surrounding zones, and if I may briefly pass this out. I did this because this is our problem here, that the Roses would like to do a farm winery in accordance with your section forty-two point five point one two. But it only talks about farm wineries being in our forty or an R eighty, the one or two acre zone. And I, Al's farm is the blue one, which is I two. And we have surrounding zones of R eighty and R forty, and to the east and the west, we have the I twos. So we've been doing some surveying and some planning. And really what we envision is that when you come up Bramford Road, Al would like to build a beautiful building and we'll show that to you in a minute, up on the top. And this portion of the farm would be grapes. And along this slope here would also be grapes as part of the winery where he would be obviously making wine and also importing some wine. He'd be able to go there and be part of maybe the wine trail. And way up on top, we would have the parking, and the remainder of the farm would remain the way it is right now, which is orchards, basically. So our dilemma is trying to get to that point to be able to make an application before you. And your regulations, as they're written, are, work well with what Al's trying to do. It just seems a little odd that I can't do this in the I two zone. Now, having said that, Al, we have a nice elevation of the building-
Yep.
Would you like to show the permission?
What was Rosa Bianca, that's R eighty or forty?
R forty.
Forty.
Oh.
So we're hopeful that we have an open discussion with you to help hopefully Al maybe amend the regulation in order to move this forward, because I do think it would be a great addition to the farm.
So, do you mind if I just kinda chime in, just from a regulation standpoint? So as Bob Criscolo mentioned, so this is the, the use chart, I'll pass this down. So essentially, because there's the X in every zone except residential, it prohibits the, the winery, and really, it's more of the activities associated with the winery specifically, the, the tasting and the events. So it's the retail kind of component that comes along with the winery. They can plant grapes, obviously farming is allowed in, in any zone. So in looking at this, in talking with Al and, and Bob, it seems like, it seems, if the commission were to entertain this, to look at allowing it in industrial and possibly business zoned areas as well. There was a parcel in Northford where Bishop's is, that's primarily zoned residential, but there's one small portion that's zoned business. So just thinking down the road, if, to avoid this situation again, if there is another farm in town that's looking to go to the winery option to have the tastings and the events and the, you know, the venue, that would allow that if it were to be permitted in those zones. The question for the commission is, would you like to see a special use permit or a site plan? A special use permit seems to fall in line with the restaurant requirements, so restaurant use in any zone requires a special use permit. And this kind of falls in line with that, and it's also a special use permit if it's proposed in a residential zone. And I don't know that there's any text amendments that you're proposing in the actual text.
I've read through the whole thing. I believe that it makes sense for the site and also for the one that you're saying we have. It's somewhat similar. And, and I agree, it's showing our zones, but not any of the zones that would be more, let's say, less of a problem, like an industrial zone.
Well, if this is industrial, right?
This is an I two zone, correct. Industrial too.
You want the whole acreage change, is that it?
No. What I'd like to do is section number, your farm, your farm winery section, which is forty-two point five point one two-
Oh, okay.
Is written great. I think it would apply here. The only thing that is troubling is that when you look at the use chart, when I'm in the I zones, it's got, I can't do it. It's just not allowed. So my proposal would be, hopefully, to be able to modify that, to be, have that allowed in the business zones. I think it would make sense, but that's your interpretation, the V one, the V two, the V three, and the I zones, maybe not in I three. But that's really a discussion.
Bob, I was gonna, why couldn't we just rezone that lot? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, you know.
You can't do that, 'cause first of all-
Well, I'm just, I'm, I'm just asking.
Yeah. First of all, that's spot zoning. And secondly is, you can't put boundaries on a whole thing. And thirdly, I remember the time that Mr. Rose fought to keep this all industrial, 'cause it was talked way back about changing. But I can understand the text amendment. Yeah, that's not doing spot, spot zoning.
And I agree with everything you've said, and I would hate to take an I two industrial zone and turn it into a residential zone. I, I think it's more beneficial to the town to keep it an industrial zone. And if you thought what we're proposing makes sense for this zone, I think in the long term, down the road, it's better to do what we're talking about.
To me, it certainly makes sense, because a winery is a, a nice addition to the town. And if it would draw people into the town because they're gonna maybe make the circuit, they're gonna stop other places. So I would say we should look at the, you know, taking the text amendment and looking at what areas we have and that are industrial or, you know, 'cause to say blanketly that wineries, which has the capacity of people coming for tasting and all that, I think we have to look on the map and see what other industrials we have and what business zones we have. So, you know, I agree with the winery, but I think that we have to look at the whole picture, 'cause you can't just make a decision. Like I said, I would love to see the winery there. It's a farm and we should keep as many farms as we can. Draws business into town, but we have to look at the whole picture before a decision, decision would be made.
I think I, I was thinking, sticking along the lines of, like, like our plan of conservation development talks about these I industrial zones and trying to develop them, right, and get tax revenue and things. What we don't wanna do is necessarily, what we should think about this carefully, is we don't want to have this, have the opportunity to have wineries and, not that it would be, but in all our industrial zones where we could get good businesses as well. It's just something to think about. I mean, like-
Right, and we can, if you want to, you know, have this as a discussion and if there is a text amendment that's proposed, one of the things that I would do and with the commission is look through the regulations, so the specifics. And one of them is that the, whatever parcel you're looking to apply this farm winery use to, has to be a minimum of ten acres. So you're not going to see a winery pop up on Route eighty, for instance, because there's, i- if we apply it to a business zone or even, a lot of these industrial parcels are not ten acres. So it, it breaks out and separates out a lot of these.
Okay, not in areas that are conducive for a winery.
But wouldn't, wouldn't the winery be considered an industry for processing?
Yeah.
Not, he has, if he has wine tastings-
Right.
And that's a whole different, puts in a different ballgame than just growing wines and processing wines.
Retail sale of wine, yeah.
So the processing absolutely would be industrial, it's an industrial zone.
Yes.
It's the tasting.
It's a farm.
It's the tasting component, it's the events, the retail, that brings it into a different category.
Yeah, well, I mean- Retail.
Well, all breweries have tastings, but that's not their main business.
It's not different, they make it, it's a year of examples.
But why, the tastings isn't the main business, the main business is creating the wine. Or every brewery has tastings.
Sure, but with wineries specifically, they, and I think this, in this situation, they may be looking to having, have events. So when you think of events and what planning and zoning looks at is other things that come along with it, parking, noise. So all of those things are regulated under these regulations. And right now, it would just, it's out of the question in an I two zone. So what they're looking at is just asking the commission to study that, to see if it would be possible to do a text amendment to allow it.
Well, sometimes the events are covered in a special use though, aren't they?
Where? I'm confused.
Well, when you have a special, if you have an event, sometimes there's special events and you get a special use permit, right?
No.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't apply like that.
The Brentford Fest, the Potato Fest, was that a special event? There's a special use permit for that?
No, it doesn't work that way. It's not a special use permit zone.
On that property? It's not-
And this-
Well, they, they might have to file, they might have to get a permit from the police department, but not, not as well-
Get a permit.
But it's not a special permit.
No, and we usually, and that's only because you're using like-
So what's, what's your concern, I guess?
I don't have a concern, as you're saying, it's, it's gonna be, they're gonna have events there, they're gonna have five thousand people there every day at an event.
Okay. So are you-
They're not, they're not gonna have five thousand people every day at an event.
So do you think-
Nobody's suggesting that, I mean, what does-
I'm just curious though.
Hopefully they have five thousand there.
We're trying to differentiate between, you're saying, production. So the production would be allowed, but there's other operations beyond production that don't fit the industrial zone. That's the distinction Carrie was making that, that's why right now it's not allowed in an industrial zone.
And they're not building a building like this to process grapes. They're building it for future use. The, I mean, he processes apples and makes apple cider, does all bits and-
Can we bring this back a little bit? Just to, we just wanna-
They're just trying to get a deal for-
Is this an option? Is this an option? So that's what they were looking at. We don't have to, it's not, not, not by the vote, we're just giving, just an option to do it
Is it an option to do what?
To proceed in what their plan is. I mean, that's just, it's, we're no vote here, just a discussion. And they just wanna get an idea of what, what we think before they make the next, you know, their next step in progression. So, I mean, Bob, do you need anything more from us? I mean, you got some feedback from us?
Yeah, I guess I was looking for guidance and I wanted to work with the commission. Al and I had spoken about this with Carrie and we wanted to talk to you about this, to see what your mind thoughts were and hopefully give us some proof of thought for proceeding with an application, which I thought for the use here in the site with the existing farm was ideal. I thought it was good for the town of North Bramford. I didn't think about changing the zone from an I zone to an R zone, 'cause I thought that was a bad thing. I thought this would be a light use that's on the farm that would enhance the farm and hopefully preserve it for future generations. So I was looking for some discussion with you guys to figure out whether you agree with my thinking and Al's thinking that this is a good idea and hopefully some help with how to proceed so that we could come up with something that was good for the town of North Bramford.
As I said before, as far as I'm concerned, and certainly for the winery. Whether we make the text amendment for, including I zone or, or the business zones, I think that, that has to have more investigation to see exactly what areas we're talking about. Other than that, and Carrie seems to think that there really isn't anything, but I need to be assured of that. I don't want somebody else coming in and saying, oh, I'm gonna put a winery in. And I happen to be in a business zone or god knows what.
'Cause once we, 'cause once you make, once you make the change, then it applies to-
Right.
So we, we, yeah, I mean, if we're gonna do, you know, the I two zone, probably, that could be the only property.
Yeah.
Maybe there might be some others. Business zone might be a little more.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we definitely need to take a look at that before we, before we start taking the changes on that.
What I'm hearing is that it may not necessarily be a bad idea. And maybe I should present some information to Carrie and I could work with her. And if I felt like I was in the right, the right, the right road, then I could need an application come before you
In the ballpark.
And maybe we can discuss this further. Does that seem-
Yep.
It seems right. I mean, I certainly would rather see this than Mr. Rose decided he's gonna build a thousand houses there, so.
Okay. I think that we have a need, we gotta do this.
You never know.
I am disappointed about one thing, though, that this beautiful drawing didn't come with a frame.
I agree with that.
Whoever did, whoever did it, they did a great job, but I can't read it.
The woman's a landscape artist that works on some of the houses I've built and that-
That's a great, that's a great drawing.
Make an idea and then just-
This is, this is more likely to-
So Carrie, do you need, yes, do we really sink tonight and talk about a budding the town land? Or have you looked into that?
That, that we can look into when we get there, but it's, yeah, let's raise it now.
Okay.
Bob, where's North Bramford?
Okay, right, correct. So, yeah, so this actually is North Farms Park. It, it comes in in this odd shape, comes back around our piece, which is the, the old mill on the Bramford River and then, you know, and the mine. So I know you went through that on the restaurant on Route eighty, but I don't know how, you know, I mean, so I'm touching North Farms Park. Even though, and Bob would know, I'm gonna guess I'm a couple thousand feet away where I wanna build it.
Oh, oh, okay.
But I think it's one piece of property, so that's another problem.
I don't see that as a big problem, because you're planting, first of all, you're planting grapes.
Well, as long as it's, I mean, you have to address it or say, okay, it's not an issue.
Yeah. You're planting grapes and if, if-
What's the regulation on your sheet?
In, in a site plan, that would be addressed, you know, about any drainage going.
No, I think you're talking about, no, I think it's about the alcohol, alcohol consumption.
Yeah, you're talking about alcohol.
Yeah, no, no, not that, you're talking about-
Alcohol consumption.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause he, 'cause we, there's, in a regulation, we have-
County town land or, I, I don't have that regulation in front of me, but Carrie brought it up.
I think it's from the building, not the property line, though.
I don't, so, so if it is, it is, but I mean, that's something that we have to think about, Bill.
I can't remember.
It's, it's from the corner of the building to whatever.
Yeah, but I can't remember if there's anything about-
Can't, what is it, fifteen hundred feet or something?
Well, I don't know, but it said about budding-
Valley Road versus-
Budding property.
Valley Road.
I don't know what it said on that.
I don't remember exactly what it said.
I'm supposing, and Bob hasn't worked it out, I, I'd like the driveway to come off Valley Road.
Right.
You know, it's the end there with no houses. Wineries really don't have a lot of traffic. Certainly nowhere near as much as my friendly neighbor has and friends have.
I don't think I have the updated one.
So that corner, I've lived there my whole life, you know, I, even if Bob could get a lead with driveway on Route one thirty-nine, it's just a mountain. So, so we're thinking of going, I don't know how many feet down the Valley Road.
We're early on in our surveys and our planning, but the general thought is-
Is it still there?
We have something at the driveway that was slow and then come off that around.
Forty-five four.
No, five fourteen.
I've seen.
Wait, what'd you say?
Forty-five.
I mean, fifty-four. You're twenty-two seven.
Yes, and can we also supply drawing now?
But, okay, this would then be helpful.
That's, that's the rendition of the driveway, not the road then.
Or is this the old one?
Right, that's the right.
I'm trying to picture it.
Very good.
So then, and the other thing, you know, I'll just comment, you know, knowing that, you know, we do need tax dollars
Yeah.
And wherever there's studies, I'm not saying that this is a big tax dollar, but whenever studies are done, problems in town, they almost always come back that this is the most desirable piece of land to develop. Having said that, we've owned it arguably, and I spent a little money trying to find this since it was a bigger part of Bramford since sixteen forty-four. What the winery does is gets our next generation pretty excited about the farm. So, yeah, hopefully, hopefully it'll work.
And if I could just add, so our children, you might know, are the thirteenth generation to live on the farm. We've diversified by adding the creamery and we have quite a bit of traffic in the fall, if you've come by. But this is a way that we're really hoping that subsequent generations will keep it as a farm instead of, you know, it's industrial, we're not looking to develop it at all. But we all have real jobs to support the farm and it's another way for us to hopefully grow for our kids and the next generation.
That would be a good, sixteen forty-four for a name for a wine?
There you go.
Ooh, royalties.
I'm, I'm thinking, Bob, I might have to trademark that tonight. Bob, can you help me on that or anybody? Alright, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, did you find anything yet?
I'm, I'll confirm when we, yeah, when we get there. I just don't wanna, but I, I think that we're okay.
Okay. Alright. Is there anything else? Anything else? Anything else?
The, if everyone could just save the date, there's that Connecticut law workshop, March twenty-fifth. It's at Wesleyan in Middletown. It's really good.
I thought it was March eighteen. I'm wrong?
Just, that's another one.
I think it's the, I think it's the twenty-fifth.
There was something on there. Something's on the eighteenth, something's on the twenty-fifth.
I'll check what's on the eighteenth.
It's that thing, there was two, two things in the email.
Oh, there was, right, the land conservation-
Yeah, that's-
Is on the eighteenth, also in Middletown at Wesleyan. And then the twenty-fifth is the all-day zoning class, which I went two years ago and it's, it's just really good. It's updated- It's updated case law, so, and we do have some money in the budget, so if people are interested, the town can cover that.
Oh, I'd go to that one versus the eighteen.
Yes. If you have to pick and choose.
Green.
Is that somewhere the one I went to, the other one I went to, last fall?
The twenty-fifth, the one that's on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
No, this one, I don't think anyone went. I went two years ago. They have, they only have it every two years.
The one with the, the law one is is really good, but there's a lot of lawyers speaking. So, no, no, I'm just saying, it's it's a long day.
Material, it's a long day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they 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 cover a lot of case cases and and, you know, potential cases.
Right.
So they do a pretty good job.
It's like a full day version of that.
I can't.
That was a full day one too.
You can't go.
That was from back here.
Where we go?
Germany, eighth to three.
Uh-oh.
Oh, right.
I might be out too.
Yeah.
So that was everything.
I gotta go, I gotta do a week and a half in the West. That's why I was, I hope this thing got delayed.
Should I email you?
Cincinnati.
I didn't get that.
You better fly, only if it comes up when you're away.
Yeah, I don't think I sent it.
I'm gone.
So I'll send it out.
I can't come back.
We can't have a meeting.
I'm gone for a week and a half. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, well, somebody, yeah, go ahead, somebody, somebody wanna make a motion? Second?
Second.
Uh, favor, aye? Any opposed? See you none? Thank you very much, good night.